I mean, I don't really need to come off.
Yeah, you can just exit.
Yeah, I feel fine. I think we're fine because there's empty seats.
Let me, if we can ask, when you're done with people, you can ask if anybody's downstairs. And I'll have Paul, because IT is downstairs also. So Luke can let Paul know and Paul can let us know.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know how else we can...
Yeah, like I said, Dave was gonna go down there, but I don't know if anyone's down there.
So they all exaggerate.
Sure.
So they want to see them eyeball to eyeball.
Lisa, you ready?
I'd like to call to order the meeting.
Get your gavel, Harvard.
Get your gavel, Harvard. We're waiting for a clerk. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Human Services Committee meeting. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If the clerk will take the role, please. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present. Thank you. I'll accept any, the addition to the agenda, Health Department updates.
Make the motion.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a stack of citizens wishing to be heard tonight. So just a couple points of order. Everyone has three minutes. Our Sergeant of Arms will keep track of that for you. There's also a clock in the back of the room. I am going to call as they are in order, and there may be people downstairs, too. There is a couple second delay for that feed, so we want to make sure everyone has their time to speak. If someone has made the point that you are planning to make, make sure, we have heard that. So make sure that you are making other points so that we can hear everything tonight. So the first person will be Lauren Schwaehofer.
Can you put her on the bottom?
This is her time. Okay, so we'll move on. Melissa Garcia.
Is she from here?
The podium, please, so we can hear you.
Okay. I would like to just read a series of facts and end them with a few questions. And with the facts that I'm reading, I do have references for everyone, and I've got several copies. If you guys would like one, I have that information for you. Researchers from Washington University reported last month that 11 months after mild infection, immune cells were still capable of producing productive antibodies. The authors concluded that prior COVID infection induces robust and long-lived humoral immune response, leading some scientists to suggest natural immunity is probably lifelong. Reinfection following COVID-19 is possible, but rare, according to a study recently published in Clinical Infectious Diseases. The researchers found that reinfection incurred in 0.7% of patients. Another study is quoted, "We know that reinfection is not a common occurrence, at least in the short term with the original variant, of the virus, as well as some of the other variances." A study from Cleveland Clinic that tracked cases in healthcare workers who were either vaccinated or previously had COVID-19 found that the rate of reinfection is essentially the same as if they had been vaccinated. Researchers in Denmark conducted a four-million-people PCR testing study, and overall, they found a very small percentage of the population, 6.5%, experienced reinfection. Data from Israel revealed that natural immunity appears to be 6.7 times more effective than being vaccinated when it comes to fighting off COVID-19. Another study, vaccinated individuals were 27 more times likely to get symptomatic illness. A study shows that previous infection with SARS-2 induces effective immunity to future infections in most individuals. The findings of the author suggest that infection and development of antibody response provides protection similar to, or even better, than the currently used SARS-CoV-2 vaccines. In Michigan, officially-reported death rates, which do not factor in the number of people who were COVID-positive with mild to no symptoms, we had a death rate of 6%.
You have about 20 seconds.
In November 2020, that dropped to 2%, where it has stayed. This was months before vaccines were available. So my questions are, why is vaccination the only acknowledged status for Health Department policy? And why are those with natural immunity being discriminated against by matter of exclusion when these policies are put into practice? If someone needs to talk on something else, I got a piece. Kim Horta. I'm gonna apologize if I mispronounce names this evening.
I wasn't gonna speak today, but I saw some familiar faces out there, and so just get up there and speak, Kim. So I'm Kim. I'm gonna try to keep my cool, but I'm not promising anything. I'm a mama bear. I am a mama bear. What you and the Health Department, in the schools, are doing to these children is wrong. It's time to do the right thing and start fighting, not only for us as citizens, but our children. It is time to stand up, because if you don't, guess what the new normal's gonna be? This. Every single time you have a meeting, we will go in and we will recall you, and we will rip you right out of here. Trust me, we have the power. You guys work for us. This, ours. This beautiful thing, ours. We paid for all. These lights, we pay for it. Start working for us, or there's gonna be some issues where you're sitting. You won't have that paycheck. You won't have that paycheck. Trust me. Thank you.
Carolyn Richards.
Hi. So as of 9/1/21, I looked on some of the data, and it said only 43 confirmed cases in St. Clair County, which is down from like two or three days prior, which was 64. And with a population, I believe, over 163,000, that is 0.03%. McLarenport Huron has two COVID patients right now on a regular floor, not even in the ICU. Went to an urgent care last week. Our friend went and said, yeah, they haven't really seen much COVID. Lake Huron ER, I know a nurse that works there on contingent, said really haven't seen much. So an epidemic, widespread occurrence of an infectious disease in a community at a particular time. Under the MCL 333.2243, local health departments have the authority to do the following only in an epidemic, that widespread occurrence of an infectious disease. They can prohibit gathering of people. They can ensure, they need to ensure continuation of essential public health services. Those are services that they already offer at the Health Department. They can enforce health laws that are already in place, not create new ones. So I would question the overreach of power by the Health Department at this time. Last meeting, we stood in front of you and we asked you, "Don't allow a public health order at this time." We asked you to request data and more information to show the necessity of a public health order. After we spoke, we sat here and listened to you guys rally fundraisers, talk about Battle of the Bands, Rockin' the River. There have been packed festivals, fairs, concerts, stadiums, and stores, and yet you are allowing mandated quarantines for our healthiest, lowest-risk population. These quarantines needlessly yank kids in and out of school, disrupting education, and to discriminate between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated is awful. When did discrimination become acceptable again? Out of all these quarantines within the schools last year, how many actually developed severe symptoms? Why not allow a student that has tested negative to return to school out of their quarantine when healthcare workers don't even have to quarantine unless they have symptoms after exposure? Where, why is natural immunity not recognized? Last year, Grand Haven High School did their own contact tracing review. They found that out of 1,380 in-person students, there were 154 cases, and 53 had to be contact traced. Out of those 53 students, and 100, I'm sorry, 1,011 students were quarantined, and only 11 tested positive. That's one...
Yeah, about 20 seconds.
Okay. 1.1%. So they worked out that transmissivity data, and it showed that the worst-case scenario, there was only a difference in 2.86 cases. That's a difference of 56 versus 53 cases with the quarantines. That's only three additional students. So in addition to the studies that were mentioned, the Oxford University study published...
If you could wrap it up, please.
I'm gonna yield my three minutes back to her.
That's up to you.
He's next in line. So you're Steve? Okay, thank you. So Oxford University Clinical Research Group published another study that found vaccinated individuals carry 250 times the load of COVID-19 viruses in their nostrils compared to the unvaccinated. And then in addition to those other studies that were mentioned, in Israel, it was found at the Herzog Hospital in Jerusalem, where many of the people in Israel are vaccinated. 95% of the severe patients are vaccinated. 85% to 90% of the hospitalizations are in fully vaccinated people. These vaccines don't decrease the transmission, which means you can still get and spread COVID. It's only meant, and it only has ever been meant, to decrease one's symptoms. So why are we quarantining only unvaccinated? Why are we quarantining at all? These are our healthiest population. Thank you.
Randy H. Randy H.
Hi, my name's Randy Hastings. I wasn't going to address you guys. This is my first time here. Just like the rest of the parents here, I'm pissed off. Excuse my language, but I am. I have two football players. I've been born, raised, port here in Michigan, and they love playing football, and they love learning and going to school. But they will not go to school wearing a mask when they are healthy. They're healthy. My husband is an Iraq War veteran. He fought for our rights. Do you guys realize the monster that's being woke right now? By the suppression of our constitutional rights? Do you realize, do you also realize that when you sit there and you allow this to happen, you will be accounted for? It will come back. You can legally be held responsible for suppressing our rights. This is not okay, you guys. It's not ethical. I mean, these beautiful women in the front, I'm sorry you guys are wearing masks, so I'm using you as an example. The aerosol, I hope you guys, have you learned about that? I'm sure the Health Department has. These masks do nothing. Do you see how it's peeked out on the side like that? The air is coming right in. It doesn't save anybody. All it's doing is it's hurting our children, and it's pissing me off. And it's waking up the veterans, and that is a very scary thought. Very scary, you guys. This is, the nonsense has to stop. The segregation has to stop. The discrimination has to stop. And it all falls in your laps. You guys have this ability. We voted for you guys. We're, it's not even like that. It's more deeper than that. We're relying on you to make the right decision. Our children's lives, I'm sure you guys have children, right? You guys can imagine what's going on here. My kids wanna play football. My son almost passed out because the mandate said he needed to wear a mask while playing football. Are you kidding me? It's ridiculous. He's outside. It's ridiculous. It's gotta stop, you guys, and it falls into your lap. And I'm telling you now, many of us parents have constitutional lawyers, and one of them. I'm gonna leave that there.
Carrie Fuller.
I'm Carrie Fuller. I'm a fifth-grade teacher. The best I can do is bring up that show, "Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader?" Because I can tell you, I can tell you, fifth graders are smart enough to read these articles. They know the masks don't work. They know the vaccines are deadly. They see the nonsense. Never have I taught on Constitution Day or through fifth grade, when I'm expected to teach the Bill of Rights and the forming of our Constitution in our country, never have I ever told them there's a three-minute limit. I didn't know about that one. So I am not going to teach the three-minute limit. When I teach the Constitution, it will be, "You have a right to be heard by the people that are elected." If it's, "Visit them at their office," if it's, "Write them letters," "Send them emails." Organize so that people can get together and talk. That's what I will teach. Because you are there temporary. If you're not looking out for our children... I don't know if you realize, these mandates, what they've done. An entire group of students lost their graduation, their prom, their parties. They also lost with that the opportunity for scholarships, because with quarantine, they weren't there working with the counselor. We have someone here whose son gave up $170,000 scholarship because he refused to get vaccinated. That's his right to not get vaccinated, but now he's being discriminated against. That's his right to not get vaccinated, but now he's being discriminated against. Do you understand the effect that you have on the future of people? It's not just, you're out of school for 10 days. You are messing with their future. I don't know if you understand that. The mandates need to stop. And we are smart enough, a fifth grader can read an article, that these doctors are being paid a lot of money to give the vaccines. $40,000 for 100 shots? What kind of doctor at the health department wouldn't keep pushing vaccination and mandates? It's about their gaining money and you're taking it away from us, one child at a time. One child at a time is what you are destroying if you continue to let these mandates happen. Thank you.
Kevin G.
Good evening. I'd like to start by saying that straight out of high school, I joined the United States Air Force and I served, I served six years. I took an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against enemies, foreign and domestic. Never in my life did I think I would see so many domestic enemies in our own government. This is a bunch of junk and it's gotta stop. From the beginning, people followed the, the science that said, if you, if you socially distance and you wear a mask and you lock down, just two weeks to flatten the curve. Well, welcome to a year and a half into two weeks to flatten the curve. It didn't work. And in the first two to three months of this mandate, nobody went out without masks. Nobody went where they weren't supposed to go. We followed your science. Your science is a bunch of bunk. People began to see holes in the science early on when it was okay to go to the dentist, but you couldn't go get a haircut. It was okay to go to a liquor store, but you couldn't go to the local bakery. You could go to Meyer and go shopping with all those other people, but you couldn't go to church. This is an infringement on our rights. This is a, a direct attack against the Constitution of the United States and we will not stand for it. We keep hearing that this, this shot, I don't know how, how many times I've heard the propaganda and that's what it is, it's propaganda. Every morning on my way to work, the safe and effective COVID vaccine, the safe and effective COVID vaccine. Have you ever heard the safe and effective flu shot? Have you ever heard the safe and effective measles shot? Who are they trying to convince? It's not safe and it's not effective. If, if they think it's effective, their idea of effective and mine is completely different. Because if it's effective, it prevents you from getting it and spreading it. And that is not happening. And I, I just wanna say this. If you decide to put another lockdown and mask mandates in place, we, the citizens, will not comply. We will stand for our rights. We will not comply. And I just wanna end, I wanna end with a slogan that's been shoved down our throats by the abortion people. My body, my choice.
John Parkinson?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I'd like to start off by saying mandates and orders are not law. You guys, I'm pretty sure you guys can affirm that you guys all took an oath to uphold and protect this, correct? This Constitution? Okay, this is the unalienable law of the land. This is the supreme law of the land. I suggest you guys get a copy of it and read it. Next, I'd like to say that Carolyn pointed out 333.2243 about the health department and what they can and can't do. Also, Michigan has three waivers for public schools, guys. We have philosophical, religious, and medical. Religious waivers are probably the way to go. They can't deny those, it's a First Amendment right. So I wanna remind everybody about the law, since this is the supreme law of the land and Michigan has a law. You guys are aware of that, right? MCL, Michigan compiled laws, for everyone who doesn't know. Section 380.1307B, I'm pretty sure you guys all heard of this one. I want you guys to take this back to the health department and take it back to the public schools because these are the people you report to and answer to. These are, these are the people you answer to. You're hearing all the anger and all the madness in this, but you're not hearing the law. So I'm gonna give you the law. The, the state policy under section 1307A shall include a clear statement that all of the following practices, all, I mind you, all of the following practices are prohibited from school personnel in public schools of this state under all circumstances, including emergency situations. We are not under a pandemic right now. We are just talking about a COVID, a Delta variant. We're gearing up for something that isn't even there yet. Okay? So let's talk about that. Under emergency situations, A, corporal punishment as defined in section 1312. That is not allowed. B, the deprivation of basic needs. Oxygen, folks, is a basic need. C, child abuse is not allowed. D, seclusion, other than emergency seclusion. Segregating kids based on their vaccine status or, or they can or can't wear a mask or shouldn't, shouldn't wear a mask, that's not allowed. That is seclusion. That is D. E, the intentional application of any noxious substance or stimulus that results in a physical pain or extreme discomfort. Need I mind you, these masks are noxious and extreme comfort. Okay? Too many. Yep, just let me finish, I'll be brief. A noxious substance or stimulus prohibited whether it is generally acknowledged or specific to the pupil. Mechanical restraint, chemical restraint. H, any restraint that negatively impacts breathing. That is in the law, folks. I, prone resistant, physical, and you got J and K. J is physical restraint, other than emergency, physical restraint, and any other type of restraint. Thank you.
Lindsey Chapp?
Hello, I just wanted to say that I oppose and question the recent public health order. I'm curious as to where this public health order was all summer. As a few of you have mentioned, we've enjoyed concerts, I saw some of you there. We've had summer school where there was no concern for quarantining, shopping, weddings, all kinds of different events, both indoor and outdoor. So that's my first question is where was that concern this whole time? And also, the public health order says that vax people don't need to be quarantined. Well, 0 to 12 can't be vaccinated right now. So you're forcing my children to miss school. Okay? And your, my children are not the vulnerable population, no matter what anyone tells you, they're not the vulnerable population. And to attempt to quarantine my healthy child just because they sat next to someone who may have symptoms, sniffles, whatever it is, that's absurd. We've never done this before. We didn't do this for the flu. We don't do it for other illnesses. Why are we doing it now? Okay? And my children have already missed one and a half years of schooling. Okay? I have a third grader and I have kindergartners who are doing kindergarten again because they just didn't quite get what they needed. I also have a son who is in speech class. How do you think that affects him when he was wearing a mask last year? How do you think he was able to communicate? Okay? And he's still gonna be in speech this year. So, you know, kids need to be in school. They need it for healthy, social, emotional development. And we all need to realize that sometimes school for children is their only safe place. There are children who are being abused at home. Okay? Or maybe they need, and this is their only place to get food that day. Okay? So again, we need to afford children the upbringing, the safe education and safe school that we all had and the experience that we all had. We need to give them that. Okay? I also just printed this from the CDC website today and the statistics are from July 12, 2021. And it's basically a rate ratio comparison of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. They use reference group of 18 to 29-year-olds. They did not give numbers as far as 5,000 deaths or anything like that. But basically what they're, they're saying is whatever the rate of death was for 18 to 29-year-olds because of COVID, like 30 to 39-year-olds are four times at that rate, right? So four times more deaths. You have like 75 to 84-year-olds, that would be 230 times that rate of death. And then over here, 0 to 17, it's negative one time. So again, I just, I don't understand why we are quarantining the healthy children. So that's my question. I would like that to be thought about. And again, I'm here to keep my kids safe. Okay? Thank you.
Christine Holland?
Hi, my name is Christine. I am not only a parent of a student that goes to a school in St. Clair County, I'm also a nurse. I would like to ask the health department, the board members, what do you have to say to the parents that have lost their children to suicide the last year and a half? The children that are isolated, the children that are not getting the help that they deserve, the, the children that don't have a teacher to go to because they're over a Zoom meeting with all the other kids. Kids that can't get away from abusive parents, like was said earlier, the numbers are not adding up. The facts are not adding up. What you are putting out to the public and what I know as a nurse and my colleagues and my friends and the doctors and the physical therapists, et cetera, it is not matching what you're trying to sell. It is not realistic. And you guys are going to try to pull our children. Do you know that the death rates of flu for children versus the death rates of COVID for children? Not one of you has ever wanted to put a mask on our children before this COVID stuff. You need to know the numbers and the true numbers. Do your own research. Check into what the agenda is for the people that are giving you the numbers. You need to do it for yourself. It is not as bad as it is being portrayed. I promise you that. Look out for these children. They cannot look out for themselves. And we are not going to have these children have masks when they go back to school. You've got a week to make sure that this does not happen. It is not fair, it is not right, and it is not safe for these children. So fix this or we will be here every single week. Because we do love our children and we hope, and I hope, and I pray, that you love and respect our children as well to make the right decisions. Because I don't see any of you wearing a mask right now. None of you. Do the right thing.
Mary Powell?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I have this amazing three-minute speech all written out and ready to go for tonight, but that's when I started looking into the codes that our local health department has referenced in their advisory and the letters being sent to individuals about quarantining healthy people. First, as medical professionals, our health department should know that anyone can be asymptomatic to any virus. We don't quarantine for those viruses, which in case everyone has forgotten, could be deadly to one, but not another. An advisory is defined as having or consisting in power to make recommendations but not take actions enforcing them. But this advisory contains bill codes such as 333.5207 or 333.5201, scaring people into thinking there will be a misdemeanor or civil action if they don't comply. Well, I learned and spent many, many hours on the phone with a Michigan House representative. He states that she has to, she has no rights to upholding these threats. I've also been in contact with a constitutional attorney. You see, these codes that keep getting used are only to be used in a state of emergency. And last time I checked, we're no longer in a classification of a state of emergency. 333.5207 also states in a state of emergency, a person can be tamed up to five days in a public health code. And that's only when the president's, the president's is irreversible, bloodborne diseases such as AIDS, hepatitis. I was also advised that the CDC can make recommendations on public health, not mandates. What I've also learned over the last 18 months is that the government, the CDC, the state and local health departments think that it is a one-size-fits-all virus. Well, it's not. Actually, the CDC calls it an outbreak now. Just like any other virus such as norovirus, the flu, SARS of 2003, the common, the common cold, one person's immune system may react differently than the person sitting next to you. I personally know several health professionals, nurses, paramedics, and all of them have worked with COVID patients. While most never tested positive, a few did. Every single one of them had different symptoms, but they're all alive. Most also are refusing the mRNA shot. I have high school athletes who had to be quarantined last year for possible exposure. Both are very healthy, never tested positive, never had a symptom. What it did, it hindered their education, which in case hindered their future. I know avid maskers who have tested positive. My 84-year-old aunt, overweight, diabetic, lots of health issues, well, she would be here to meet, with me today if she didn't live so far away. I will conclude with this. Throughout history, when government is given power, it rarely, if ever, cedes that power back to the people. The more we as American citizens allow it to play a role in our lives, the more we subject ourselves to the risk of government tyranny. We need to take our constitutional powers back and start learning to live with the virus. We need to be responsible for our own health decisions, not a government power who does not know everyone's health situation.
Bill Warner? Warner?
All righty. My name is Bill. That's all you guys need to know. You have my last name on the back. Freedom of, you know, fear. You, sir, mom, whatever, you've been sitting there relaxed, feet up, just like you are now. You need to start taking these people serious. I'm a 10-year vet myself. The day 9/11 happened, I walked in my mom and dad's living room on his big screen TV. I saw one of the towers already in flames. I looked at him, I said, is this for real? He says, yes. Shortly after, I seen the second one hit. I looked at my dad, which is a vet as well, gave him a salute and walked out the door. Seeing the things that you see while serving really waking, it wakes people up. Ladyhead spoke about waking up a beast. I've had it. I'm already awoke. You guys can sit there, every one of you politicians can sit there. Think you guys are protected. I'm gonna guarantee you right now, you're not. Civilians to government officials, even all law enforcement, we outnumber you with weapons and personnel. And you guys need to believe that. This is not a threat. I bleed our amendments, our Bill of Rights, and our Constitution. I will protect anyone that is not able to protect themselves. You need to believe that. You, 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 you. Everybody here needs to realize that. Do not put us in a position to where we have to show you what hell really looks like. I've been there and I've been back. I've been there probably a little bit more than most people. It's not a fun thing. I'm trying to be as PC as I can be, but you guys are about to push me along with a lot of other vets to the brink of making sure that we take care of our own. I am a stepfather of three children in this school district. I am a stepfather of three children in this school district. You even think about trying to bring law enforcement, judges, the child protective services, go right ahead. I've already talked to the family services and the Judge Tomlinson. I will take an assault charge to protect a child. And so will every other guy I know that I have ever met in my life will do the same. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Alice Dental.
Good evening. My name's Alice Dental. I'm a lifelong resident, taxpayer, and mother in this county. I helped elect every single one of you. I expect, I demand, moving forward, that we let the people do what is right for them. This whole, you have to do what we say, is crap. I'm recovered, my daughter's recovered, there's thousands of people in this county that are recovered. We're far better off than most of the other people, thankfully. The reality is, this disease is highly survivable for most of the population. And to continue to force mandates on children, children, little kids, is disgusting, and I'm over it. I'm done. My daughter has a severe language disorder. Do you have any idea how much anxiety it causes her to not be able to see people's faces? Any, any at all? I'm done.
Nicole.
First, I just want to tell all of you thank you. You give me hope. We've seen a lot of disturbing behavior from government bodies as of late, and what brings me here today is no exception. Letter from the Health Department threatening to arrest individuals who do not comply with the orders from the Health Department because they hit the quarantine lottery. I'm standing here as representation for many parents with whom I'm familiar with throughout St. Clair County, who could not be here today or did not know about this meeting. I won't berate you, I will not plead with you, and I won't bother to throw statistics at you that you will scoff at. None of that matters, because it's quite simple, actually. You see, I decide what's best for my family. And I'm saying no. No shot, no testing, no mask, no quarantine, no contact tracing, no lockdowns, no mandates. No means no. And I refuse to be ruled by a Health Department, a State Department, or any government entity. The Health Department needs to turn down their authoritarian tone, because the people of St. Clair County will not comply.
Darren Rushing.
Hello, my name's Darren Rushing. In full disclosure, my brother's county commissioner, I do not live in his district. Also, I'm a vet. I'm a Marine. Arrows never end. And people vote. So, onto it. Everybody's mentioned quite a few things. I had a really long speech written out. The short of it is that the Health Department cannot cherry pick the MCL. There's quite a few things in there that everybody has mentioned, even more than I've had. But the teeth of it is that for anybody that this might affect, you have to have specific proof, you have to have specific facts to pursue each individual. Now, everybody knows the six degrees of Kevin Bacon? That's actually a statistical thing. This meeting itself would actually affect every single person in the county. Okay? To seek those individual things, Health Department has to go to the court, request, give or take 160,000 to 200,000 arrest warrants, and then the sheriff has to actually serve them. I want to see that happen. This is a red flag advisory. This isn't even a law. This is fear mongering. Okay? The other thing that I want to say is that I think that Dr. Merkentant and the Health Department have seriously overstepped their authority. I would request that they have some form of audit, possibly a personal censure, or even her dismissed from her position. This, this is not yelling fire in a crowded group building, but the ramifications of these actions are far reaching and far more serious than that. This seeks to take control rather than knowledge or education. Two things. I'll leave you with a quote from Abraham Lincoln. "Freedom is not the right to do what we want, but what we ought. Let us have faith that right makes might, and that in faith, let us, to the end, dare to do our duty as we understand it." For the citizens and the vets, again, we vote. When they vote, by all means, when a legitimate concern is brought up, track who votes which way. When the elections come around, remember that. Thank you.
Sean Treadaway.
Thank you, Sean Treadaway. I'm an East China School District parent. If there were some numbers together, I'd look up, but I did not memorize them. So according to last census report, school enrollment for St. Clair County was around 42,822. It's about 2,900 nursery school and preschool students, 2,300 kindergartners, 20,000 elementary, 10,000 high schoolers. Let's break that down to the voting parents. Assuming each parent has an average of two school age children, that's roughly 10,700. Population 65 and older, I know there's some younger grandparents, but I was just going off the numbers on the census, 19,000. Again, let's assume that the average grandparent has four grandchildren, so roughly 2,500 voters. All of you but two ran unopposed in the November 2020 election. Think about that. Only two commissioners ran against an opponent in November 2020. Of the 72,038 votes that you all received, how many of those voters have children in school right now? How many of those voters have grandchildren in school? How many aunts and uncles have nieces and nephews in school? How many of those voters have like minded friends? Of the voters just mentioned, how many of them believe that masking our kids is a parent or guardian choice and not the health directors? Of those voters just mentioned, how many of them believe that quarantining healthy children due to a possible exposure is the right choice? And the very important question, because we can't get answers, how many of you board members agree with the mandatory masking and quarantining? Do not mask our children, do not quarantine our healthy children due to possible exposure. Leave our children alone and let them learn. Masks are a choice for us, the parents, not the scared, fear mongering health director. The health director is not elected by the people, you are. I'm here to remind you that you took an oath to protect our constitutional rights as free individuals. And for the health director, on August 12th, you made a comment about this not being about our constitutional rights. I fought in three conflicts before I was 30. This is all about our constitutional rights.
Kim Van Bock.
Good evening, everyone. As like Nicole said, all of you here, thank you. It gives me hope too. Thank you. We have three children in the East China School District's 8th, 9th, and 10th graders. I'd like to talk a little bit about mental health. Number one being anxiety. These poor kids, we send them to school to learn in school, we send them home online, we send them back masked, we send them back home again. Then we're quarantining healthy kids because maybe they might have caught in COVID. It's not right. What are we doing to our kids? We need to stop these mandates. And what are we teaching our kids? Are we teaching them to live in fear? We're teaching them to be germaphobes? And then teen suicide rate, I know it was mentioned. It's alarming since the pandemic. This is a study on the CDC, you can see it on the website. It's girls ages 12 to 17. This study is from February through March of 2021. It's emergency visits for presumed attempted suicide. This is compared to the same period in 2019. The suicide rate went up in girls 50.6%. What are you doing to our kids? 50.6%. Shame. Shame. Last I checked, my hubby and I, we didn't decide to co-parent with you guys. We didn't. And these letters that are getting sent out, guys, what if the people didn't quarantine? Where are you going to send them? Camps? Does this sound familiar? I mean, guys, let's wake up. Let's wake up. Stop abusing our children. Stop the school mandates.
Pam Binnsfield.
Good evening. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. You all sitting on this board tonight remember seeing this sentence or one very similar to it? This is the oath you take when you are sworn into the position as a county commissioner. How many of you are standing by this? How many of you took it seriously when you said those words? I don't know any of you personally, so I can only speak on your actions on this board. And I would have to say from where I sit or stand today, many of you are not upholding this oath. Over the past year and a half, you have allowed the Director of the St. Clair County Health Department, Dr. Annette Merkentant, I apologize, to run this county despite the gross infringement of the residents' rights afforded to us by God and upheld by the states and US constitutions. As of August 20th, a public health order for quarantines and contact tracing was issued by decree of Dr. Merkentant. This order has been followed up by a letter to a family notifying them that they or their child will be taken into protective custody until a hearing date is set and that a member of the SCCHD will ensure they're in compliance, until, I'm sorry, will ensure their compliance all because they were a contact, not even sick. Is this real life? When did the Health Department become judge, jury, and executioner? MDHHS and SCCHD do not have the authority to do this according to those documents you all swore an oath to uphold. The statutes that would like to cite as saying they do are unconstitutional because they were given to them by a legislature that didn't have the authority to do so. The list of infringements upon the Constitution are extensive, and I am happy to share them with you at any point. But I will have you note the first, ninth, and 14th amendments of the US Constitution to start. The blame can't all be placed on you. I take responsibility for this situation, as should everybody in this audience. We have remained silent. We have let the government and subsections of it slowly chip away at our constitutional rights for 60 years. I'm only 38. Saying and doing nothing because of whatever reason we thought justified it at that point. Sure, not anytime. This will not stop. Do your jobs, commissioners. Uphold the oath you took. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. Thank you.
Lauren Schweifer.
Well, I wasn't prepared to speak because I was told that I couldn't. So I am here to tell each and every one of you that I do not want masks on my kids or anyone else's kids. I want you to stop quarantining our children. I'm sorry, I know you guys aren't doing this. I want you to stop quarantining our children. This is ridiculous. I don't care what you want to justify, how you want to justify it, we're telling you, we don't want to do it. I am not going to quarantine my children. I'm going to send them to school. They're not going to wear a mask. And you know what they're going to do if they told to wear one? Say no, thank you. Because my kids are polite, but they're going to go about their day because they deserve to be in school, they want to be in school. And they don't want to wear masks, and they're not going to wear masks. Don't make our children wear masks. Thank you.
Marcy McClellan.
Yeah, my name is Marcy McClellan. I was here at the last meeting, and I just have to say this is amazing, how many people are here. I had lots of things that I was going to say, but pretty much everybody has said a lot of what I was going to say. So I'm just going to reiterate what they've said, and that is that you took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and I hope that you guys seriously think about that. If you need to get ahold of a Constitution lawyer, because maybe that's not what your attorney is that you have, I would suggest that some people commented that they have some, they can maybe give you some names, because I actually did reach out to your counsel and asked that this public health order not be required by the schools, but maybe optional. And he didn't think that. So I would suggest that you may need to seek other counsel. One other thing that I found today in some research that I was doing, because I tend to do a ton of research these days, this came out from the State of Michigan State Board of Education, and it's referring to mask mandate resolution. It was dated August 10th. So it goes through and it talks about different mandates, but in the very bottom paragraph, it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports local school districts' ability to make scientifically informed decisions, including mandates for universal masking on buses." So I know that a lot of schools are trying to say that you have to do that, but right here, this says, from the state board, take it to your school boards, says that they do not. It says they give them the options right here. So I know that that was a huge thing that was an issue for some people. So I just want to say, I had kids last year that were quarantined, and it was a nightmare. It's wrong. They never got sick, and it's something that needs to just be stopped. So I hope that you all... So I hope that you all will consider if this really needs to be put in place.[603.66][603.66](APPLAUSE)
Geneva Bivins? It might take her just a moment to get up here. I believe she's in the overflow room.
Maybe a handful. I heard maybe five or six. I know, well, she came up, and she could have sat here, so I don't know.[635.22][635.22](MUTTERING)
Lisa, you have anybody after that one?
No, Geneva's the last one.
Yeah.
I do have one, and it's her option. Julie, if you wanted to speak here, she handed it to me to put on mine. Potentially, it has Ways and Means Matters, but I have it. But if she wishes to have it addressed at the same time as both, that's her option.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank all of you for coming and speaking up. Excuse me, I'm a bit winded from running up this downstairs up here. So first, I would like to remind all of you, I would like to remind all of you that you took an oath to uphold, excuse me, the U.S. and Michigan constitutions, not state law, not mandates issued by unelected bureaucrats or executive orders by the governor. Looking over the org chart published by SCCHD, I found a serious error. The Board of Commissioners is listed at the top of the hierarchy, but it is the people that hold all of the power. And many of the public servants in this state and St. Clair County seem to have forgotten that, those elected and appointed.[739.01][739.01](MUTTERING) I'm still winded. The people hold the power, and that's backed up by the U.S. and Michigan constitutions. I wonder how many of you have taken the time to read those. Everything that we have seen over the past 18 months has not only been a violation of the separation of powers, it has also been an overreach by those that hold positions, they don't have power granted to them by the people or the Constitution. We have all witnessed violations of the Nuremberg Code, separation of powers, violations of the ADA, equal protection discrimination protected by the 14th Amendment, also Michigan Article 1, Section 2.[788.43][788.43](MUTTERING) Our right to assemble, First Amendment, Michigan Article 1, Section 3, freedom of worship, First Amendment, Michigan Article 1, Section 4, freedom of speech, First Amendment, Michigan Article 1, Section 5, which has been heavily censored in many areas. Let's see, contact tracing, unlawful search and seizure, Fourth Amendment, Michigan Article 1, Section 11, enumeration of rights, not to deny others, Michigan Article 1, Section 23, closing of businesses, the government and its agencies do not have the authority to interfere with contracts. How much longer are all of you going to allow the atrocities of the past 18 months to continue? What is it going to take for you to uphold your oath, to speak up about the wrongdoings and stand up for the people that you serve? Sorry, you guys. I've heard on more than one occasion that the Board of Commissioners doesn't have the constitutional authority to repeal mandates issued by the Health Department. While that may be true, you do have the authority to fire those that are issuing mandates that are not backed by science.[871.57][871.57](APPLAUSE) So you do have the authority to fire those that are issuing mandates that are not backed by science or supported by the Constitution. I strongly urge all of you to uphold your oaths, make the changes in the Health Department that need to be made, to do the right thing, stand up for the people, our rights and freedoms. If you don't, I can assure every one of you, you will be held accountable.[904.93][904.93](APPLAUSE)
Please wrap it up. We have given you a little extra time.
Okay. Saying I was just following orders or it's for your safety isn't going to save you from prosecution in Nuremberg 2.0, and it isn't going to get you reelected. I think I can safely say that myself, along with many others, will do everything in our power to make sure you never hold public office again if you don't stand up and uphold
There are no other citizens wishing to be heard?
Julie, if I could, Lisa. Julie, would you want to speak now or wait until the Ways and Means Committee? I don't see you out there.[958.43][958.43](MUTTERING)
Thank you. My name is Julie Wessel, and I also am a mama bear. And I want to thank everybody who already spoke. I just have a good feeling about this county now. Sometimes you just wonder how many people believe the way you do because we are silenced so much.[992.04][992.04](APPLAUSE) Thank goodness. But kind of working through so much was said that I don't want to repeat. But I'm going to give you my personal testimony that my daughter just returned to in-person school on Tuesday. I can't tell you how happy she is to be back.[1010.01][1010.01](APPLAUSE) I refused to put her in a mask for in-person learning last year. I had absolutely no idea the ridiculous requirement to wear a mask would last so long. Had I known, I would have unenrolled her from the public school and homeschooled her instead. She utilized the virtual option through our school district, and it was a horrible experience. My daughter left 6th grade with a 4.0 GPA, only to struggle through the entire 7th grade year just to get a passing grade. My normally quiet girl was so frustrated, she stood in front of the school board at a recent meeting and told them about her experience and how it affected her.[1048.83][1048.83](APPLAUSE) My daughter is only one. How many others were negatively affected by their experience? Is this what you want for our kids? Remember, these kids are the next generation of leaders. They will be running the nursing homes we are in. They will be the doctors we seek medical care from. They will be the new health director.[1072.24][1072.24](APPLAUSE) I'd like to touch, I have a lot to say about this. I'm going to try to get the highlights. But in the last paragraph of the Health Director's Opinion editorial dated August 16th, she asked some questions that I'm sure she intended to be rhetorical in nature, but I would like to answer as many as I can in the time I have left. Is not wearing a mask worth not going to school? Yes.[1098.41][1098.41](APPLAUSE) Yes. A million times, yes. If a mask mandate is imposed upon us again, I will unenroll my daughter from her local Along with the many other parents who have vowed to do the same. What effect will that have on our school system? Another question she asked was, do you really believe an entire nation of healthcare workers, researchers, and scientists are systematically and nefariously creating scenarios to harm your kid?[1127.78][1127.78](APPLAUSE) There is a very loud minority that are definitely guilty of nefarious activity. And I'd like to highlight a local example of it.
You've got about 20 seconds.
Okay. At the last, I'm going to read it real fast. At the Board of Commissioners meeting on August 19th, we learned that at least one commissioner was excluded from the meeting with Dr. Merkentant that was scheduled for the very next day to discuss potential public health orders. Not only was Mr. Rushing excluded, he had no knowledge that a meeting was even scheduled.[1160.65][1160.65](APPLAUSE) The people who reside in this particular district probably have no idea that he could not represent them at this meeting.
If you could, please.
Okay. My daughter was with me at the meeting and quipped, "My gosh, they're acting like junior high school girls." That is the impression this board has made on a 13-year-old girl. This does not help foster confidence in or encourage respect for our county government. We know there is corruption at the federal and state levels of government, but we hope that everything is on the up and up at the local level. After all, we are represented by people who literally live next to us in our communities.
Now, with no other citizens wishing to be heard, we'll move on to the next agenda item, the Health Department update.[1219.47][1219.47](APPLAUSE)
Quite a act to follow.[1234.42][1234.42](MUTTERING) I'm way up here.
We'll have order, please.[1240.65][1240.65](APPLAUSE)
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm going to just stick to my script. Ladies and gentlemen, this is kind of an update for you to understand where we're going. All specific questions, and we've been taking notes of everyone's concerns, and we will provide updates and answers to these in writing and post them on our website and on the county website, and we'll keep that updated.[1268.74][1268.74](APPLAUSE)
Please. We're asking for respect and decorum.
Please, we have a presentation. Please listen to her.
So this is the most recent update on the total number of cases, total hospitalizations, and total deaths. We do count bodies. We do have a lot of people contacting us that have dire concerns about their illnesses.[1292.47][1292.47](MUTTERING) They're not here, and I wonder why. But they exist, believe me. We hear from them every day. Our seven-day averages now are at 147 per 100,000, and our test positivity is now 9.4%. So there has been a steady increase, although not a precipitous increase as we saw in March. We're seeing a steady increase of cases. We are not seeing increases in hospitalizations, although those generally do lag several weeks behind increasing cases. These are, this is our most recent graph. And you can see that on that graph, there is a steady increase in cases towards the end. Whether we will plateau at a lower rate or go to a precipitous increase is waiting to be seen.
Dr. Merkentant, I'm going to ask you to hold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all set? Not yet.
We'll just let him grab that door.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
This is our COVID vaccination data, and you can see that we have an overall rate of 75 points, excuse me, all age groups, 55.5% of vaccinations, that's at least one dose. But there's a great variation in vaccination rates amongst age groups, and I will mention there's also great variations in vaccination rates among social demographics. So parts of our county are very well protected, and other parts of our county are not. Just to mention, and I thought this was interesting, is that we still have over 500 people per week seeking vaccinations. So despite some of the comments tonight, I assure you there is a large portion of our population that still believes in vaccines and is still pursuing some of the standards. There is, I've noticed a lot of references to the CDC website. There was data removed. I would suggest that maybe we just don't cherry pick what we want to believe in from the CDC site and what we don't.[1462.71][1462.71](MUTTERING) So, the severity of the disease, there's a lot of discussion and scrutiny of data, and I think a lot of it is directed because people don't want to believe that this is something that should be dealt with, something we should worry about. I'll be happy to add to that discussion in detail. I don't think this is the appropriate place. Just let me say that the threat of COVID is very real. We count bodies all the time. If you look throughout the United States, there's significant impacts, not just death, but the socioeconomic impacts. A single COVID hospitalization averages about $50,000 to an individual. There's lost wages, and we did hear about the depression and the isolation and many of the things that go along with this pandemic.[1510.21][1510.21](MUTTERING)
Please keep it down. She's not.
You don't know who I am, ma'am, or what my experiences have been. So I would be quiet about that.[1524.13][1524.13](MUTTERING) Vaccination rates. Vaccines are safe and effective. We have over 400 million doses and a worldwide system of surveillance, robust post-vaccination surveillance, and ongoing data. Now, the vaccine effectiveness is probably going to change as the variants become less sensitive, but it is still our single most effective tool. And there are little, if any, long-term side effects from vaccines in general, and none to speak of with this vaccine. We can also discuss outcome data for people that believe there are more severe outcomes, but a lot of that can be easily explained if they understand the information a little bit better. And finally, face masks. So lots of pros and cons about face masks. By all means, the data is not definitive, but the majority and the preponderance of evidence suggests that face masks do significantly reduce transmission of infection and can slow the rep. Now, I will just say that we cannot use one study or one professional judgment to weigh in on such important factors. And my staff at the Health Department are exceptional, but we do not even rely just on our own staff. We consult daily with state and federal officials. We consult daily with every expert in the area. And what we need to follow, ladies and gentlemen, is the consensus of expert opinion and not, again, to cherry pick a di idea or a paper that might support my decision.[1626.36][1626.36](MUTTERING) So, a difference between isolation and quarantine. Isolation is when you separate someone who is sick. Quarantine is when you separate someone who is exposed. This is historically a very solid public health intervention. The Health Department has one fight right now, and that is to slow this outbreak down, this coming outbreak.[1652.13][1652.13](APPLAUSE)
Please keep it down, please.
We're not fighting about who's telling the truth. We're not fighting about constitutional rights.[1659.63][1659.63](APPLAUSE) We are fighting. That's my job, is to slow the outbreak.
Dr. Merkentant, if you respond to them, then they have a right to talk to you.[1669.88][1669.88](APPLAUSE)
I apologize.[1671.88][1671.88](APPLAUSE)
Please keep, let her finish.
So let's just go through a little scenario to help you understand how we approach this when there is so much variability in data and so much emerging science that's occurring every day. I mean, loads and loads of papers, right, that you can't possibly go through. So we have this decision-making grid, and we have two possibilities. One, COVID really is a very mild disease, and it's not really a big deal, and COVID might be a very serious and highly ongoing transmissible disease. On the other axis, we have that our mitigation measures are applied aggressively, and the result of that, if COVID is mild, is that we have unnecessary costs, pain and suffering for our society. Economy, education, our social functions are impacted, and this is what I think a lot of our people here tonight were discussing. On the other hand, if we're correct and COVID-19 is a severe and highly transmissible infection, by doing the right things with mitigation measures, we will have less deaths, less hospitalizations, and a reduced duration of the disease. So we will lower the impact of this problem on all levels. Now, what if the mitigation measures are not applied? The same two scenarios. So we don't apply any mitigation measures, and in fact, COVID-19 is a farce, and it's not real, and it's not really a problem. Won't have much impact, right? Minimal impact, business as usual, health, work, school, maintain. It's a good thing. But what if mitigation measures are not applied, and in fact, COVID-19 is very severe and highly transmissible, as we suspect? We will have increased deaths, particularly those deaths that can be prevented. And this is the biggest problem, is that when we have tools to prevent disease and allow it to happen, I think it takes on a much greater social and moral implication.[1781.63][1781.63](APPLAUSE) Increased hospitalization and widespread illnesses, loss of work, and maybe even potential economic impact and collapse. This is the, these are the scenarios that we are forced to really waddle through. So when you look at, okay, we could choose that left flow. So when you look at, okay, we could choose that left lower because we don't believe COVID is bad and we don't believe the mitigation measures should be applied. What if we're wrong and the alternative is imminent collapse and prominent death rates?
Please, please keep it down, please.
By the way, our staff lives in this community. We have experienced all of these issues. Our children go to our schools. We suffer, right along with everyone else, when it comes to this. And we do not live in a bubble. We are, we are, we believe we're in this together with the rest of the community. And I do believe that.
Please don't talk.
Our consensus as a group is that we always try and seek out the best information that's available at the time. We're not saying we're always right, but if we're wrong, we adjust, we pivot, and we keep doing our best because our goal is to fight the impact of this virus. I don't know, Gary, if you want to speak at all to the authority of the Health Department when it comes to orders. But I will say, just make one comment to some of the issues, and that is the most recent mandate is really just a reaffirmation of something we always do with tuberculosis, with any infectious disease. The Health Department has the ability to quarantine and promote that kind of safety for the community. It's done on purpose to not have an elected official do this because sometimes it's a hard job to do. The warning letters people are receiving are the same warning letters we have been using for decades. Okay? So there's nothing new. We didn't create anything, but we did reiterate this issue to make people understand that this is our role. This is our lane, and we take it very seriously.
You have no authority. We have no authority.
By the way, the frequently asked questions that we've collected today and through the weeks as people send us emails, we will be answering those and posting them. Please send your questions to either covid19@stclercounty.org or our social media page, and we will respond to them.
So I want to just touch base a little bit on the questions right here.
Hold on. You had your chance to talk. Now it's a mission to talk.
So the, the questions, we've, obviously, all the commissioners have been receiving lots of emails with lots of detailed questions that I personally, I'm not a health expert, and I would never be able to answer those questions. So I asked Annette if we could put something together for the frequently asked questions because we get, I get the same 50 emails that are asking the same questions. And I generally am very responsive to my emails, but I do not have the ability to respond, nor do probably a lot of the other commissioners when you, when you're asking those in depth. So we're trying to put a mechanism in place that we can refer people. If you want to send additional questions to us, we can put it on the website, and they can answer the question. You might not like the answer, but at least you're able to, you know, get some type of response. So I think some of the commissioners that have not been able to respond, it's just, like I said, the questions are very in-depth and are, you know, way over my pay grade, to be quite honest. So that's something that we, we want to do to try to, try to streamline that.
I think we're asking so that you find the answer, so that you understand where we're calling from.
Lisa, Lisa, you want anything? You want to respond? Please, no questions.
Yeah.
Chair of that committee allows you to talk right now.
At this time, public comment has been closed, and we're in a presentation. And so I'll turn it back to Dr. Merkentant. If you have anything else you'd like to add or other questions from the dais, Gary. Gary?
Yeah, I had a, wanted to address some of the questions that came up in the presentation. And let me say this first. I have 10 grandchildren, one great-grandchild, had one in quarantine. I had some that had school problems because of what they were dealing with, had to miss football games, missed practices. A lot of stuff went on. We also represent a lot of school districts. And I know how they, how incredibly difficult this was for school boards to deal with. And to address some of the questions you raised, Dr. Merkentant has dealt with us regarding what her, not only what her authority was, but what her responsibilities are. And her responsibilities for this county, to the best of her ability, is to try to protect public safety, to prevent the spread of this virus to the extent possible. And she takes it very seriously. And I'm going to tell you, every, every time I've ever dealt with her or her staff, it's, it's about public safety. And there are people out here that know me that made these presentations. And I'm telling you the truth, that's what their goal is. The other thing that they have to address are people's rights. And, and I know all of you feel strongly about it. It's obvious. And the, and let me say a few things first. Number one, what she says is true is that quarantine and that process is part of the Michigan Public Health Code and that she is the Public Health Director for St. Clair County, has the authority. And I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to reduce all of this to writing, and we're going to put it all on the county webpage so you can read all of it. Because I've also, I was very respectful of all of you and tried to listen really intently and take really good notes so I could answer the questions because it's important to me because it's obviously important to all of you. But under section 333.253, subparent 1, subparent 2, we concluded and advised Dr. Merkentant that she had the, the ability, the right and the obligation, if she felt it was necessary, to contain the virus to issue a quarantine order. Number one. Number two, there is no masking order. People kept saying that, we don't want our kids to wear a mask. I can tell you, it, it made my grandchildren nuts to have to wear masks. They hated it. And, and a lot of people don't like to wear them. And, and I understand. I've heard all the debate about how effective they are, you know, N95, KN95, surgical masks. I've read it all because it's my job to, I'm, I'm not a, I'm not what Dr. Merkentant is. But if I'm going to talk about it, I darn well better understand it. So I do the best I can. And I've read a lot of studies about it. And there is no masking order in St. Clair County. Period. There isn't. The, the other thing is there are a lot of constitutional questions raised. And there was a case that came down about three weeks ago. And what it was is that it challenged the, and it was a school, I think it was a parent or group appearance. And they challenged the ability of the Michigan Department of Public Health and Human Services to issue a masking order, that it violated the First Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection, ADA, the whole thing. And, and I'm going to post that entire case with the opinion that we're going to provide that'll be on the county website. And it, essentially, every question or many, many, many of the questions that were raised here tonight are addressed in that case. And what it was is it started in the federal district court challenging the state's ability to issue this order. And then it went from that to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is this federal circuit that covers our area. And the order was upheld in, in light of all of these arguments that have, many of which have been raised tonight. And again, you should read it because it addresses a lot of what many people have talked about. Third thing is, one lady addressed this issue of busing. There is a CDC order. You Google it, you'll find it.
CDC order, honey.
If you, if you, you don't just, I respected your ability to speak. Please let me say what I need to say. And then if there's more you need to get, I'll get it. I'll get you the CDC order. But the CDC issued an order that required masks on all public transportation. So that's all, everything in the airport, on planes, trains. And there's, and I'm going to be honest, there's some serious eye dispute whether they have the authority to reach into school districts where it isn't public transportation in the sense that you go in on a train or a bus. It's students that go on that bus. But they have thus far taken the position, if you look on their website under frequently asked questions, does it apply to buses? They say yes, school buses. Oh, yeah, they do. It's on their website. And the, the, please, I listen to you. Please. You know, that, that's one thing. I really respect everybody's right to come here and address the board. And I know the board was very respectful and listening to all of you. And that's one thing about our country is hopefully we, if we don't agree, at least we respect.
We don't, we don't get to disagree. We get two fricking minutes to talk. You cut us off.
Please, please keep it down.
It's about our right, okay? That's what this is about.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to stop or I'm going to ask you to step outside.
Your job is to tell us.
Sir?
That's what this is about.
Sir, please stop.
You're talking like you're talking. You addressed it. You told us there's a problem.
Sir, I'm asking you to stop.
It's our choice, not yours.
So the, the, the busing order was issued by the CDC. It expires, I believe, at the end of September. I questioned whether it'll be renewed because a lot of people have questioned its legality. That's about what I have to say for now. I'm going to go through these notes. We're going to do an opinion letter that addresses as many things as I have decent notes for. And what I don't, she will. And, and then we're also going to attach this case to the opinion that's called Resurrection School versus Hurtel. Hurtel was the Public Health Director for the State of Michigan that addresses virtually every constitutional issue I heard raised here tonight. So that's what I'm going to do. Get it to the board. Get it on the website so everybody can see it. And I'll answer as many questions as I can that were raised tonight, to the best of my ability.
And then you said on that, September 3rd, you'd have the frequently asked questions, I guess, part of it. And then if there are.
We're going to start, believe me. I don't think we're going to get to all of them, but we're going to start working.
And then any other people that do email us, we will forward it and, like I said, get a response to because I, I cannot answer those questions that are being asked of me.
If I could, Gary?
Sure.
Because you're going to be taking care of this. This is the actual law that she made reference to, and she didn't have the same wording that's in the actual law. The first statement, if you review it and you.
I've got it. I got it.
But if you look at it, she has to issue an emergency order before she can do the quarantine, the way I interpret it. My head attorney looked at it myself, and he agreed with me. But look at it and come up with your opinion. Also, it seems like you have a conflicting law here. If you go onto that one.
That's a, that's a, that's a school code.
I know, but that's still.
School code doesn't govern her. It's school districts and school supervisors and school boards. But I'm familiar with that.
The state law will come with any.
No, it's two separate laws. One about public health, one about running schools.
So if you have a conflict, I'm, I'm just asking.
No, 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 you're asking whatever you want.
Because they want the same thing. Because here, one was addressed child abuse. You have suicides up 50.6. If that percent was correct, if we do quarantine, potentially have more suicides. Potentially. And that's one of the concerns brought tonight. Also, of course, we don't have a mask mandate, but it impacts breathing. Seclusion, other than an emergency seclusion, short of an emerg, and this covers emergencies all. Even if you have an emergency with the state, we have a state law that says you can't do it. And if I'm incorrect, please include it on your opinion.
I'll, I'll address that.
You have this also? Because I got extra copies.
No, I got them.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners for Dr. Merkentant? Or?
Actually, I do. What's the procedure? Like, I was reading through some of the, um, for the letters, like contact. So if we get exposed or John Smith gets exposed and he fails to call back or contact you, what's the next step?
I believe the letters are only sent to individuals who we have not been able to contact.
Okay.
Okay.
So if they don't, if they don't.
And are they going to exposures as well in the school districts? Correct.
So if they don't ever get back with you, what, where's, what's the next procedure?
We have not yet imposed any regulatory authority over any of the people under quarantine. These letters are intended to advise people that this is serious, that it, that we take our job seriously. But quite honestly, quarantines are short. By the time we reach an individual, their quarantine is over. And not to say that's nothing, but we have yet to pursue some, an individual, any individual who is noncompliant. Is it possible? We could. I suppose it would. But again, we would not do something like that unless there was a very egregious situation where we felt it was seriously putting risk.
You make a statement that you can hold them against their will. I mean, it's an awful harsh term for trying to get somebody to comply.
That is extracted directly from, I believe, the, the language was extracted verbatim from what we have been using, like I said, for years. It was not altered in any way.
But we don't have the ability to even follow through with what?
We have the ability. And, and I don't know we could, you know, at, at some point, if there was a very egregious issue, noncompliance, and we felt it was putting the public's health at risk, we would ask the courts to issue a subpoena.
So I talked to Mike Winland and Matt King today. They've had that many tickets, prosecutions, all the above. It's been, it's been nothing. So it's not, just to let you know.
All right, now that he could, when, when you're done, I do have a couple of questions if I could. I don't know if Matt King, I have not talked with him myself. Would he be your arresting authority if somebody didn't comply? Has he agreed to do that for you?
I don't believe the issue is arrest. I believe it's a.
Somebody to be in compliance. If they, and I'm just.
I believe we'd issue a ticket.
Okay, who would issue the ticket? Who would issue the ticket?
I'm, I have to defer to corporate counsel. We've never reached that point, so.
Yeah, the.
Well, it's a serious letter, so they want answers. I want answers.
Yeah. The, the. The county has a civil infraction ordinance, so a civil infraction ticket could be issued, number one. Number two, we have had a couple of situations not involving COVID where somebody had a extremely deadly contagious disease, and it had to be dealt with by the courts because they, they weren't going to comply with any kind of isolation. So the, what Dr. Merkentant said is true, which is the letters go out. Obviously, they're strongly worded to try to get people's attention. They've gone out and, we represent, I don't know, 10, 12 school districts. They've, they don't, I can tell you the, the people impacted by the quarantine don't like it, but they've had next to no problems dealing with it. And, you know, nobody's been issued a ticket. And what Dr. Merkentant says is true. The Santa Lotta County quarantine period is 14 days. St. Clair County's 10, correct? days, St. Clair County's 10, correct? And, and by the time the letter catches up with somebody, or, you know, the tracing is done and the calls are made or whatever, normally the quarantine's done anyway.
So this is an act in futility, is what you're saying?
No, no, I wouldn't say.
Because I do have two more questions.
I wouldn't say it's futility. What I'm saying is the letters go out to try to get people's attention, so hopefully they'll work with the health department to comply. But there's not somebody out there with a, you know, a 300-pound sledgehammer coming down at anybody. It just doesn't happen. That's not how they operate.
Would it be the depth, the sheriff department? If necessary, would the sheriff be the one?
You know, I'm going to be honest with you, we haven't even looked at that. It's never been raised, never been raised.
Does the health department have the authority to issue tickets and arrest?
No.
But what, please, let, let the court answer.
What my opinion off the top is that what they would have to do is appoint an officer who could issue civil infraction tickets under the county civil infraction ordinance, and that's not been done.
And we, the county commissioners would have to give her that authority.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it. I think you're right under the civil infraction ordinance.
And it also, because I'm the last one, please, and I'm just, be patient, like, these are questions that everybody's here for. A person or organization who violates an order of a local health officer, whatever that order is, whatever they determine that today, is guilty of a misdemeanor. How did we get past due process prior to even being going to court? That's in her letter.
Well, you can't be guilty of a misdemeanor until you're afforded due process.
Well, that's not what her letter says.
Well.
We need to reword that. My last question, and, I mean, there's lots of questions we could be asking you. But on your first point up here, this order does not apply to individuals who are fully vaccinated, as defined by the CDC guidelines, who have had documented COVID-19 in the last 90 days and are currently asymptomatic. So if this is with schoolchildren, if somebody that's been vaccinated goes into a classroom and is sick, has been vaccinated and is carrying the virus, that person can continue in school indefinitely?
No, if they're sick, they're isolated.
If he's a, if that person's asymptomatic, some people never get symptoms.
They would know it unless they were tested.
But that's still asymptomatic. And according to your wording, that person could continue in school until that person gets sick. That's what your letter says. What I'm doing with your words.
You know, there's no way you can prevent every contagious person from entering an environment. You have to draw criteria that are reasonable. Correct. If a person is fully vaccinated and is asymptomatic, they are assumed uninfected, they could continue to go to school. If they are assumed infected, they would be remained off.
Let's have a conversation. But potentially, one person, see if I'm correct. I mean, just theoretically, an asymptomatic person that's been vaccinated could potentially infect 25 kids in that classroom. Never have symptoms, but carry the virus and infect other people that infect other people. So I believe, and my, and he can address this too, in your opinion, that I don't think you need to, I don't think you can have a discrimination against vaccinated and unvaccinated.
A vaccinated individual is much less likely.
What?
A vaccinated individual is exceedingly less likely to get infected. They will not transmit the virus unless they have an infection.
But they can.
They could. So could, yes, so they could.
I think you're discriminating. In my opinion. Uh, please, please, we're trying to have a meeting here, and we, less interruptions, we can continue with the meeting.
We did discuss this. This has come up, and I don't get, I'm going to defer to you, Gary, I apologize. But we did discuss the difference between discrimination under the ADA and making decisions about infectivity and risk based on vaccination status.
Yeah. And the, the, we will address that also in the, there's, there is, obviously, you can get in different circumstances where people are treated differently. And it's, it's, a, and a good example is the vaccinated versus unvaccinated. And the question is, which was addressed in this case that I'm going to give you a copy of, is whether there's some kind of unlawful discrimination based upon who's required to wear a mask and who isn't. And our opinion is it doesn't violate the ADA, and it doesn't violate the US or Michigan Constitution, and we'll address that specifically in the letter.
One last question for you. Does she have, the health department have the authority without this notice to take somebody who is sick? And they determine it by fact that that person is sick, to take them and put them in quarantine on an individual basis rather than a countywide basis? Does she have that authority without having a letter issued countywide?
And what, what do you mean a letter?
Let's say Jeff Bohm got really sick from COVID. Does she have the authority without having a quarantine letter out there to take him and issue an order to put him in quarantine?
The, so the, we have a quarantine order, or a quarantine order countywide.
I'm saying if we didn't have that.
We didn't have that.
Does she still have that authority?
Yeah, we, we recommended the order because I think it would be very questionable to do that without an order.
Well, she mentioned in past history that was required, when you brought up past history.
We always, we were always under the impression that the ability to quarantine is a, is a legal authority.
I'm just asking questions so that.
And I, I will say one more thing, though, and that is that we were also under the impression, I mean, this has been going on for a long time, right? 18 months. Many of our discussions with fellow health felt that sending a warning letter as a precursor was important to do prior to any other interaction. So in other words, we would not take any action beyond anything unless there was a warning letter provided first because of this due process, that we were, they were at least notified. So partly that was the reason why we maintained a warning letter, is we felt that it was at least a way of kind of, kind of preparing people a little bit to know that if something really, again, egregious, something really bad was to happen, they would at least have been forewarned that this is a potential. Now, maybe that was a bad idea, but that was kind of the idea behind sending a letter out.
The arresting authority and the sheriff takes care of that. And you take someone into custody that just is not going to comply.
Mm-hmm.
To the quarantine order.
She has no authority to take anybody into custody.
But the sheriff does if she gets a court order.
Yeah, if the, the court would, if the court ordered that, which has never been done in St. Clair County that I've worked on, then the court would determine how that order is enforced. The court determines how.
That's where I'm getting next. And I'm going to assume that it would be the sheriff department if it's countywide rather than the city. It would be a sheriff deputy or possibly the sheriff himself. If they go and take that person, put them in handcuffs, put them in their patrol car, doesn't that person now become quarantined, that deputy? And threaten his way of life? Because he will now, and I've talked to Matt King, he is not going to require vaccinations, but he also is not going to pay them while they're off. So potentially, if you're in the same car with the police officer, unless they have a special vehicle to get them in there, if anybody gets in contact, wouldn't that become a contact? I'm just.
Yeah, and I assure you that those things would be considered before we'd even make a move. These discussions would be made in detail.
Do you have a quarantine place in this? It's never happened, but we need to address that because these are concerns for the residents and myself. If somebody is a noncompliant, and they're not going to stay in their house and potentially get arrested, where do you take them? Because I don't believe the sheriff is going to put them in the jail.
Right.
Do you have a facility to put residents in where they won't be?
No.
Okay.
Nor would that be our desire to do.
I know, but that needs to be ahead of time. This is a very, potentially a very expensive thing for the residents, cost people their jobs. That needed to be discussed because now you're talking tax dollars. I think that needed to be in front of the conversation before we put out an order that we're going to potentially take residents within St. Clair County and put them in quarantine. That's, that's an expensive issue. But, okay, I'll finish. I could go on and on, but thank you.
I got one more question.
Sure.
Now, if somebody is vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine.
They still need to monitor.
Right. Now, if you had already had COVID and had the antibodies, would you be treated the same as the vaccinated?
We're not sure how long protective antibodies last with natural infections, so the cutoff currently is 90 days.
So after the 90 days.
So after the 90 days, they would be treated as somebody with naive, with no previous infection.
All right, let's go.
And that will change, I'm sure, as, as more data comes out, if we understand the serology better. But right now, we use 90 days, and beyond that, you would not be considered immune.
Thank you, Dr. Merkentan. Are there any other questions? All right. So thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Conceptual, excuse me, conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
Seeing no business, we'll move on to new business. Can I have a motion to approve, or can I have a motion for the community health improvement plan? Contract approval.
So moved.
Support.
So we'll move, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other human services matters to be brought forth tonight? None, information only?
I'll make a motion, receive and file.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unless you want to stay for the next three meetings. Me, too.
You have to email your paper from Washington today.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'll call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order a roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. Thank you. Seeing no additions or deletions, a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion be carried. Any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Any updates? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
None tonight. We have no old business. Under new business, we have 7A, the fiscal year 2022 crime victims rights program grant application. This is $162,370 grant that comes from the state, that goes to the prosecutor's office, and it helps us employ 2.75 people. And we need a motion to send to full board if we could.
Make a motion.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions?
Unrelated. I had to say something. The secondary road patrol grant yesterday, I was talking to Jeff Green, and they were thinking about, you know, during the COVID thing, they weren't pulling people over, they weren't issuing tickets and all that stuff, and how much that revenue is, you know, down for that, you know, statewide, and how important that is to St. Clair County. Just kind of found that interesting. So, doesn't have anything to do with this, but just a little side note.
Well, thanks for throwing it in.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a contract addendum approval request for the community mental health authority.
Make a motion to send that to the full board?
Support.
Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does anybody have any other judiciary public safety matters? Motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You?
Nope. He gets up fast. Get the door. Sure does.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee to order, have a roll, roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none. Any updates by commissioners? Conceptual initiatives?
None.
Nothing this evening. No old business. New business, item A, the landfill engineering master service agreement extension with CTI and Associates, for, it's for 2.8 million for a two-year contract.
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have one question. When is the last time that was bid? Do you know? Three years ago.
This has not been bid in quite a long time. We have maintained our relationship with CTI just because of our patent relationship that we have, the joint patent with them on the bioreactor technology. There were portions that CTI did with us, certain things that were not tied to our bioreactor that have been bid out in the past, and those, and those were kind of farmed out to other firms. However, our main engineering services, we have chosen to remain with them.
Okay.
We've, we've checked around to see what particular charges for, you know, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I already said all of them. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I was a little out of order. Item B, resolution 21-16, pledge of faith, full faith and credit, howling drain bonds?
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
Are there any questions?
I got a quick one for Bob. What kind of interest rates are we seeing on, on bonds today? Right. Okay. Just depending on length of time. So, okay, very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Smith, Greek Landfills Activities?
Make a motion, receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other public, environmental public work matters? Seeing none, information only, monthly parks and recs, financial documents?
Make a motion, receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, receive and file.
Make a motion, receive and file packets.
Support.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 12.
Support.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.